I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Columbia City Council as well as the Columbia Park Board for August 4th, 2020. I'm gonna have Deanne Davis do the invocation and I'll lead us in the pledge and we'll hear roll call.
Lord, we ask your presence with us tonight. We thank you for watching over our city officials and workers as they continue to provide the services we need and to protect our citizens. We ask your blessing on the volunteers on our boards and commissions. As they make difficult decisions and selflessly give up their time in service to our community. Grant us all peace, wisdom, and perseverance. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, I'd like to have a roll call of the city council and then I'll be turning it over for the park board to do their roll calls.
Becker?
Here.
Souter? McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Lakeman?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
So Ron Detweiler is the president of the park board. I'd like to turn it over to him now to do roll call for them as well.
Uh, park board roll call, Turpac?
Here.
Guy?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Pennell?
Here.
Baughman?
Here.
Detweiler here. Schaefer?
Here.
All park board members are present.
All right, Ron, um, do you want to discuss a little bit about what the meeting is about?
Yes, uh, let me say a few words and then I'll introduce our guest speaker so to speak tonight. As most of you know, at this point in time, uh, the park board earlier in the summer was given a, uh, $300,000 donation by an anonymous donor, uh, for the renovation of the pool house at Firestone Pool. Uh, there's two phases to this project. Phase one is the exterior, uh, and that's what we're discussing tonight. Uh, and that's where the donation comes in and then phase two will be actually the interior donation. Our interior construction, uh, of the pool house. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to discuss the project. Uh, and, uh, local contractor Tucker Cope has been contacted, uh, by the donor. To come up with some plans and some figures. All of the park board members should have a copy of the plans in front of you. If you attended the RB, uh, a park board meeting that was a couple of weeks ago, and I believe Lance has also distributed. Paperwork to council members. We're gonna go over those tonight. After the completion of the presentations, our goal to have a vote approval by park board. And then also by council after further questions. So we can expedite this project, uh, which the donor would like to start very shortly after the pool closes for the summer season. So at this time, I'd also like to add that, uh, Pat Tingle from the R and B committee is with us tonight. A renovation like this is gonna have to work very, very closely with Tara. And the RB committee, so we've asked her to join us so she can listen to the presentation, which she's heard before. So if Pat has any questions or concerns about how this ties into Tara, we can answer those also. So at this time, I'd like to turn the program over to, uh, C. Tucker Cope, uh, for a presentation on the pool house renovation.
Hey, and I would just like to note for the record at this time that Ted Souter has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to thank Pat, Pat for the opportunity to get involved on this project. And I'd like to thank everybody from council and park board for taking time away from your families tonight to this special meeting. Lance and I had messed around with it a little bit earlier today to see if I can gain control of the screen. To show it, I didn't know if that was possible. If not, I've also brought pictures with me that I can hold up in front of the, my computer to, to talk about them. So.
You should be able to share your screen off.
I.
It should be open now.
Okay, share screen. And then let's see, I'm, I'm not at my, so I gotta figure out how to do this now. Open system preferences.
Please don't turn Terry upside down. We don't know how to fix that.
To find, I can't promise I can figure this out.
Talk us through it.
I'm trying to find the email, trying to find the email.
Which one do you want to show, Tucker? Maybe I can show it from here.
I was looking to try to show the 3D aerial view first. That is what we're, is the 3D aerial view.
How's that?
Yep, that's it, that's.
Got it.
Someone figured out better than I can, thank you.
I do it all the time.
Well, I did it. Uh, at my office, but now I am on my daughter's computer at home, so, um, what this is, is we went and walked around the pool house and tried to take a look at it. And the pool house, uh, is an old, is an old facility, um, with structural bearing brick and, um, a brittle terracotta like tile. Block on the inside of it. And we walked around it to try to see if the brick was, what was causing the deterioration, um, the roof structure. And from what we'd had a past experience, our first recommendation was solve the roof problem. Uh, right now, uh, the roof is leaking on the inside, it's leaked on the inside for years. Uh, it is starting to deteriorate, it has deteriorated the lentils. And when the lentils start to fail, uh, they start to swell because of rusting and start opening up cro- up brick crevices. So our first process was to put a new sloped metal roof on the structure. Something that we didn't, uh, familiar, I don't know, 10 years ago, eight years ago, like Joshua Dixon School. So what we kinda did is came up with this 3D geometry, what we're proposing for a new roof structure. The one thing that was part of the conversation is keeping the terracotta front entrance, um, to keep that look. So we proposed to remove that existing terracotta because it's about at the end of its life cycle and install a new metal terracotta front roof. Trying to maintain as much of the look of the front of the pool house as there is while giving it, uh, life, uh, for generations to come. So that's kind of what we came up with. What we had established also is tried to create a little bit of an overhang around the outside, put gutters and downspouts on it. And create a uniform elevation around the outside of the pool house. The bump outs on the left and the right are a little bit lower elevation, so we had to raise those up to create, uh, uniform consistency across it. So this is kinda, this is our roof plan is what we're proposing. Uh, that's step one. The second step is how do you, uh, do something to the exterior elevations? And what do you do to maintain a look, but also prepare it for generations? And one of the problems with, uh, brick, especially old brick, is its pores and lets moisture in through it. Most of it don't really realize that most brick cladding is just what they call a range screen, which means that water comes through it. And then stops as it gets through the brick and hits a waterproof barrier, then comes down and then weeps out the bottom of it. That's gotten to be a newer thing that people actually understand that better. These old structures don't have that, so that allows the water through it and there's not a water barrier. So again, that water gets back in behind there and causes more deterioration of the brick with issues with the roof and just old style construction. So to try to come up with that, there's one or two choices to try to tuck point it and redo the outside of the. Pool house or actually cover over the brick with more of a waterproof membrane. So we proposed to cover the outside of the brick with, uh, an EFS or Stucco style material. The one downfall of an EFS or Stucco style material, a lot of it is backed by, um, styrofoam, which. Kids can poke at and torment and, and disintegrate over time. We don't need that styrofoam, so ours can be a waterproofing agent installed over the brick. And then a direct applied Stucco with a fiber mesh backing to create a uniform pair, a uniform watertight appearance. The only issue we talked about is actually leaving the front center section as exposed brick. We have a nice archway, beautiful detail on the front. And we're also planning to leave that on the backside of the pool house. But, uh, if you walk around the brick and take a look at it, initial look, it doesn't look too bad, but as you're coming up the main drive into the park where the transformers are at. I forget which, it probably gets to the worst weather conditions there and you can see the most deterioration on that. So there's a back view of it, uh, that is that, uh, EFS material wrapping all the way around the back. Uh, and terminating and leaving the exposed arches. Our other process was also to remove those existing chimneys that were across the back. They are being used for venting, so we'd have to resolve the, the venting issue to the roof. To let that out, but for the most part, those chimneys on the back of that archway. Are just superficial and actually are not too teeth, too thin to the existing brick, so we feel that we can clean those up nicely.
Tucker, what are they venting?
I believe there is a, I think Terry said that there is a HVAC unit somewhere.
There's, it's for the heater, the one for the heater.
Okay.
And the other one's for him to suck everything out of the basement.
Okay. We also looked at a couple of the numbers we've turned in so far. The one we, we haven't talked about thoroughly is putting a new fabric canopy across the back of the pool house. Uh, that covered area across the back right now is, is some type of makeshift. Uh, panel, I, I wouldn't recommend keeping it, um, it's kind of in bad shape. And the structure support system, uh, surprise, it has lasted this many winters. If you go back and look at it, it's not very stout. To me, my opinion is that should be replaced again with another fabric awning. Yes, it may have a, a life, a lifespan that's shorter, but I think, um, it could even be taken down every year if you want to, if not, it can be permanent up. But I think that's a good solution to that covered area to keep people out of the, uh, the, the sun. I think you can see the elevation differences, there's a little bit of, uh, lines. Right below the, the overhang kinda showing the existing Eve lines and that we're having to build up to make everything, uh, blend together properly. Which again, with that EFS material, that would be no longer be able to be seen, so that would be actually covered over.
Tucker, are there gutters all the way around or just in the front and the?
No, we, we've proposed gutters all the way around. If you go to the roof plan, you can kinda see that you have E lines everywhere.
Okay, yeah.
So we'd have to generate, um, that's one thing that we talked with Terra Design Group. And the proposal that's coming out, that's one issue that they put into their proposal to handle the stormwater gutters on the front half of the pool house. The back half of the pool house would have to just be sheet, sheet floor on the ground for now, because it's not worth tearing up all that, um, concrete. But if you're at a pool, uh, most of the time you're in the water, if it's raining, you're underneath cover. There are some winter windows that were covered on the front entrance, we looked at that. That one has been blocked in for a long time. It had been mentioned to me in passing by an individual that, what about reusing those windows? Uh, I don't know if necessarily for putting those windows back in, but I don't think it'd be any mu- much of a stretch of an imagination. With an EFS material to actually re outline the windows, the location of those windows to at least show that they're where they used to be. Uh, you see that sometimes common. But for the most part, I think the front of the pool house should maintain the look it has. We've thrown around some ideas on the inside, we're not gonna go into that tonight. There's a lot of cards at play to, to solve that issue and go deep down that rabbit hole. But the nice thing about EFS also is that if, and a future date when that phase comes out, we just go ahead and, and cut doors in. And patch in that EFS material around those openings.
Tucker, you said the towel deteriorating. Well, leishy towels deteriorating. Enlighten me on that.
It's, the, the tile's not necessarily deteriorating, it's a brittle type material. What they have is a lot of that structure, it's either, uh, double width brick. Or that ceramic tile, brittle tile with brick, a brick veneer on the outside of it. They don't use that as terms of construction anymore.
I'm talking about the rooftop, the.
The roof tile. The, the clay tile, it has a life expectancy of, I think, 80 to 100 years. It's, it's approaching that life expectancy. So we're, rather than, um, leave it, there probably be some rotted wood out underneath it to actually remove it and replace it with a new metal tile. That restarts the life expectancy all over again.
Why not replace it with the existing, what we have?
Cost. That, um, you don't see metal, you don't see that type of tile really used without having a lot of cost and a lot of weight. The reason why they, the reason why they use tile, because that's some of the few choices they had. And the weight is pretty substantial. That's the same reason you don't use clay tile for drainage anymore. Uh, we're still going for the same look, just with a modern material.
I've seen that, uh, those roofs in Florida, they'd taken off some of the old terracotta and put this on, and it looks good. It looks really good.
The, the thing against heavy roofs like terracotta and slate is gravity. And over time, structures sag due to substantial weight. And anytime you can, you can lighten up a roof load, uh, you give extra life to the whole structure as a whole, as, as general.
Just, just asking out of left field, is there an option or a possibility, do they do metal tile that looks like the terracotta that's there now?
That's what we're proposing, yes sir.
Oh, so it wouldn't be the, the, the straight metal like you would see on a normal roof?
No, 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 it'd actually be a metal tile, a metal terracotta style looking tile. So we wanna maintain, the pool house, if you look at it and step back, I really never realized it. But it's, it's a southwestern looking, uh, pool house to be a 30's style swimming hole. And it really does have a southwestern look to it. And, uh, we wanna try to maintain that same path.
Okay. Yeah, that'll look good. I've seen that before too.
Tucker, do you wanna talk a little bit about, uh, phase one of, uh, Tara's project? There's gonna be a lot of changes in front of the pool house.
Yeah.
Uh, it's always the size of the road, elevations. What kind of a jobs are gonna be to blend those two projects together? The renovation of the pool house and actually what Tara's doing with phase one out front.
Right, so as part of the conversation we've had months ago with Tara. And, um, we're looking at the pool house and one of our big concerns was the road. Okay, and right now, the main entrance comes too close to the pool house. And, uh, park beautification board had an in-depth conversation. And we, the park board felt that it was worth the, the funding that we've been given to actually relocate that road coming up and slide it farther away from the pool house. With doing that, it gives that more, uh, pedestrian access to it, a little bit more of a buffer. And then on the right of it, which will now be the, the gateway to the legacy trail, we feel it gives the park a more of a, a, uh. Keyhole for entrance. With that being said, in that landscaping, now's the time to remodel the exterior of the pool house. So when everything is completed, it'll blend together. What we don't wanna see is to redo all that outside and then come back and tear it up a year later, redoing the outside of the pool house. So it is important to coordinate and time them together, um, so they'll work accordingly. And we find it is very important to add, cause the pool house is pretty much the first thing anybody comes into seeing the park, at least. That's, most of the memories start there and being in the summer and then there, uh, walking to the football games. So with all those decisions and all that grandiose, we wanted to make sure that the, uh, one of the statement pieces was brought back up to modern standards. At least on the exterior.
And that's one of the reasons we're trying to expedite this meeting tonight for approval from both park board. And council so they can get a start on the project before Tara actually gets in there and coordinate these two together.
Correct.
Any questions from park board members? I know you've seen this presentation before and we've talked somewhat about it, but any questions for Tucker?
Tucker, cost wise, the donation, is it substantial enough to cover the exterior and interior? Or is it primarily just for exterior at this point?
Uh, typically, primarily just for the exterior at this point.
That is correct.
There'll be some, a little bit of funds left over, but, uh, depends on what else we get into.
And you've already gotten like estimates on roof material, uh?
Yes.
Binding, okay.
Yeah, we've already put that all together.
Good.
Park board, any further questions? Brian, how do you wanna handle this from this point? I'd like to take a vote of the park board first. Do you wanna separate council out and then do a vote after that, have more questions and answers?
Yep, yeah, at this point, I would just have you, uh, take your, your, uh, vote and roll call. And then turn it back over to council and I'll take it from there.
Okay. Any further questions from park board for Tucker as far as the renovation of the pool house? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote, uh, park board, uh, to go ahead with the project has presented. That the money's in place, as you well know, and, uh, approve the plans for the renovation of the pool house. Roll call vote, Turpac?
Yes.
Nancy? Guy?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Pennell?
Yes.
Baughman?
Yes.
Detweiler, yes. Okay, motion carries, uh, thank you. Uh, at this point, I'll turn things over to Brian, uh, to finish up as far as council comments and vote there.
So, uh, at this point, do any council members have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, Tucker?
Yes.
Uh, I know what the outside of the building looks like and your terracotta, is that gonna be same, uh, color wise as what we presently have?
As close to that as possible. I believe there's only one color for that terracotta, but yes, it should be.
Now, what about the rest of the roofing is, cause you see, you show a gray on here, okay? Just curious.
Yeah, um, and that's a good question. What we'll do is, uh, we'll probably coordinate with Terra Design, who is helping us with the, the overall. Color schemes of the park for the coordination of that, but I expect it to be an earth tone color. I expect it to either be a gray or a brown. In my opinion, but that'll be something that Terra, that Terra Design will help us with. Remember, sometimes my wife helps me pick out my clothes in the morning.
Am I assumption is glass block, uh, as for the windows?
What'd you say, Dan?
Uh, my assumption is glass block for the windows.
Yeah, there's a few that need to be fixed, but I think for the most part, they're in pretty decent shape.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, I'd like to have roll call as well.
Hey Brian, are we gonna have someone make the motion in a second?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the, uh, project presented by Tucker to go forward.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry about that, I, I, I thought we had already done that, but you're right. Any other comments at this point? Just Tucker, you draw some pretty pictures.
My drafting department does, it's not me, trust me, that's not me.
I'll take the credit anyway. All right, can I have a roll call, Deanne?
Becker?
Yes.
Powder?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, motion carries, so at this point, um. Turn it over to any, uh, probably first park, park board. I don't, do you guys normally have comments that you, uh, have, have an open session for comment?
What I'd like to do, I know Pat Tingle's on here, Pat, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm fine.
Well, that was short.
I've heard it before.
I know that, but usually you have questions. Good. The only thing I'll, I'll add as far as park board goes, uh, as you know, we've been working, uh, very diligently on the. Stadium, uh, project and it looks like that's coming into a fruition very quickly here. And, and Tucker mentioned this, but I know we've talked about it. We're trying to, just like we did with the brick ditches, uh, we're trying to utilize, uh, uh, materials and try to keep the same look at the park. So very important to us in the very near future is coming up with a design for the front, the facade of the stadium. To make sure that the architecture and the look remains the same. We talked about that with the pool house and Tucker's plans really helped develop that. So we're trying to coordinate this all together and, uh, one more project and it looks like more on the way, so we're really happy on park board.
Good.
Any other comments from park board members? Okay, our portion of the meeting, we're good.
You're good. Any council members have any comments?
I think it looks good, I really do, and, uh. It, it obviously needs some work, it's. Probably, probably a day late and a dollar short, but we're here now and let's get it done.
I'd, I'd like to, uh, take a second, again, uh, we, we, it seems like we do this fairly routinely, but I'd, I'd like to, uh, thank Pat. For her donation of, of time with the R and B and overseeing, uh, this with Terra Designs. It, it takes a lot of, uh, vision and foresight to take on more projects like this. And, uh, at the, at the base of it, there's, there's many, many people that, that are involved, but that always, at the end of the day, seems to be one person that's behind making some of these projects. Come to fruition, so I'd just like to take a second and say, uh, thank you, one. So I'd just like to take a second and say, uh, thank you one more time for everything that you're, you're doing in the, the hand you have in restoring the park.
And I'd like to add to that, just to say, I'd like to thank the park board for all the work that you did to open up the park. And make it as useful as we could during these difficult times. I think you guys did a great job. And, uh, I think there's exciting things happening at Firestone Park and you should be proud of the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
I'm, I'm gonna add one more. Thank you to the anonymous donor who's, who's paying for this project. That's, uh, that's a phenomenal project that, you know, not have, not try, had to try to come up with the money for. Either from the R and B committee or the, uh. Or from our city, you know, city coffers. So I want to send my thanks to that person, whoever it is.
Yeah, just one thing. Tucker, I think there's a, uh, a cornerstone down there.
Yes.
Are we considering adding another date to it or that something like that?
My point was to leave it at, leave it exposed, definitely leave it exposed. But we hadn't really planned on putting another date. Uh, I think some of the markers that we talked around for entrance to the park, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat. But we talked about dating some of those so that people would know when the revisions of the park actually occurred.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's true. That's Terror's idea.
Yes. So we're, the big thing was the birth of the park, the big, the big date. And then somewhere else in the park, we're actually putting the, I think, 2020 was the big rebirth of the park, which has been seen a lot of in 2019 and 2020. Then we grabbed them all together as one specific date. And maybe it'll go 2021 or 2022. I think it'd be better than 2020.
I don't know, 2020 could do something good.
Amen. That's true.
Any other comments this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to make one. As somebody who is now spending a lot of time walking through the park every day. It's beautiful. You know, walking through, you see all of the work that's been done. Park board should really receive a lot of thanks. Pat, you really have done a great job with the pond. We had some friends down from Sandusky. Uh, they could see how beautiful it is. Like I said, walking through the park, it's absolutely gorgeous. So kudos to everyone.
And I wanted to say thank you, uh, to everybody, uh, park board and council and Pat and then R and B. What a great, you know, I know 2020 has been a difficult time, but boy, we're getting a lot of stuff done. So we really appreciate that. Uh, we've been in, I think, uh, Pat and, um. Tucker and I've been in meetings since, uh, about 10 o'clock this morning together. So, uh, we, we, we appreciate all that teamwork. And in, in this difficult time, getting stuff done is, is really huge.
Anyone else? Hearing none, um, the park board, do you need to formally, uh, make a motion to conclude your meeting or, or no?
No, we don't.
So I, I need a, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Welcome back traveler.
Yeah. Thank you. It was beautiful.
Loved your pictures.
It was, uh, I, I, we, we went to Portland, uh, Maine a couple of years ago. And we, we were supposed to stop at Bar Harbor and didn't get a chance. So we ended up just spending a week there and it, it was very nice, but because of the COVID stuff. It really was, uh, like closed down, like restaurants were open noon till seven. And it, it was really kind of strange. They had to do, like, if you wanted to go out to eat, you had to give your name and phone number everywhere you went for contact tracing or they wouldn't let you in. No one, no one there took cash at all. You couldn't even buy an ice cream cone. So, yeah, it was some, some creepy stuff, but it was, it was pretty being outside. Well, have a very good evening, everybody.
Everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.